Okay, it is seven oh three.
Call this meeting.
The order?
Say it.
Uh-huh.
Stand up, please stand up. What's your lead?
What do you mean? To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor, do you'd like to lead us in tonight's prayer?
Sure.
Uh. Or just encourage to have a open conversation this evening. And uh. Pray that we can all stay calm and uh. Be respectful with each other upon. On the same we pray. Call the room name?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alan.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Here.
Here. Did we lose her?
She's still there.
Roll call Elizabeth.
Oh yeah, sorry, I can barely hear Susan, but yes, I'm here.
Yeah.
Alright.
Alright, I can read this. Okay, Councilman Greg Smith, you're hereby formally charged with with eleven point zero eight, Rule One, failure to possess or maintain the qualifications of this office prescribed by this charter. Section four point zero two of the Nelsonville City Charter, which states, any qualified lecturer that has been continuously a resident and qualified lecturer of the city of one year prior to the election and who is not the occupant of an incompatible office shall be eligible to serve as a member of the council. Each member of council shall continue to be a resident and qualified lecturer of the city throughout his or her term of office, failing, which council shall remove him or her from office.
Okay.
Alright, uh, do you guys, um. Mister Taylor, if you would please present the evidence, please.
Point of order. The notice was received.
Who are you, please?
Attorney Dan Close, representing Greg Smith.
Okay, this is an administrative hearing, that's fine, you can be here, unless you're speaking for him.
You're speaking for him.
Okay, you can speak for him.
Point of order. This is administrative hearing.
Yeah.
requiring notice. The notice was to gather evidence.
Yeah.
To present.
This is all printout here.
On the issue of eleven oh eight.
Yeah.
This was not given as notice as a removal hearing. You've gone beyond the scope of the notice. You have the power, you have the power to subpoena. And the power to give notice. We have the power to, right to request subpoena. And to confront witnesses and to conduct witnesses on our behalf. Without the proper notice, we cannot properly prepare.
You were probably, you were noticed on twelve five of twenty twenty one.
We were given.
Uh, two five twenty twenty one.
We were not given notice of a removal.
It says right here, I just read the letter. That's what I'm reading. I'm reading the letter. I'm reading the letter that was sent to him, that he, that sent to his houses and here at council, served at council.
It says you're being formally charged, it doesn't say that this is to be a removal hearing.
Read, read down at the bottom. Read the whole thing.
There's failing which council shall.
That's exactly what I read.
Remove him from office.
That's what I read.
You're reading the matter of the statute, you're not reading the notice, you know. His notice does not say we are contemplating.
You know what, we're going along with the administrative meeting. I know. Okay.
It's not our position, we have to push it on to the Board of Elections.
And then they even can appeal through them. Okay.
Uh, Mr. President, I only have one item of evidence to share. Um, and it has been presented to all council members, including Mr. Smith here. Um, just a simple white pages search on the internet, um, shows Greg Smith tied to six oh eight Elm Street, Delphi, Ohio, four five seven one four. Uh, along with Carl Mathen and Beth Tyson. Um. Also even shows the landline number of Nelsonville with Greg, uh, for the Delphi relocation. Second page. Um. Also has, um, looks like other addresses also attached to Mr. Smith's name, two thirty eight Adams Street, Nelsonville, Ohio, two fifty six Marietta Road, Nelsonville, five sixty West Franklin Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. Um, there's also an obituary from a Paul Harold Hyman, if I said that correctly.
Teamman.
Um, where Beth Tyson and friend Greg of Delphi, Ohio were listed uh, in the obituary as being relation to Mr. Hyman of Waterford. Uh, and then there's a statement written, uh, and I know we have a video too that states that the uh, um, Nathan and Brittany Tyson, who did provide this statement to uh, us, and it states that, uh, Nathan states that his relationship with Greg Smith would be sort of a stepson-in-law, his Beth Tyson's son. Um, he uh. Says, that states that uh, Greg has lived outside of Nelsonville since two thousand eight, lived in Lowell from two thousand eight to two thousand nine. When Beth left Nathan's dad, Greg moved in. Um, says Greg meddled into Nathan and Brittany's marriage, got Nathan arrested. Uh, get to try to read what on the side there about something. Um, states that from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, uh, Greg lived at six oh eight Elm Street, Delphi. Uh, after Nathan's grandpa died, uh, Greg took out loan on retirement to, um, buy out. Um, Beth's siblings Dana, Kathy, and Jenny from Nathan's grandpa's house in Waterford, which is where he's currently residing, uh, and supposedly they still own the house in Delphi. Um, the address in Waterford is one six nine zero Parkville Road, Waterford, Ohio, four five seven eight six. Nathan lived with Greg from two thousand five, two thousand six while going to Hockney College. Um, states that he and his, that Greg and his mother met on a spanking sight. Nathan met Greg when he took them on a plane ride. Greg makes paddles and sells them on Etsy, uh, paid for a trip to Myrtle Beach. Uh, Beth is retired and works a couple of days a week. Uh, that statement is signed by Brittany and Nathan Tyson on two six twenty one. Uh. Greg threw Nathan and Brittany out of Delphi's house in fall of twenty seventeen, had to switch schools for their kids. Uh, gave them an eviction notice. Nathan Brittany stayed in a homeless shelter. Greg called Brittany and she had to take all of her money out of the bank so Nathan couldn't bail out. Not as, uh, that's not the only evidence that I have.
You just get T G. Just get the.
I don't have the T G.
What's going on here?
But uh, we have a video also of this, this, even her statement. Uh, this T G Fisk, uh, five thirty seven Adams Street, uh, states that uh, she has lived at five thirty seven Adams Street since February twenty third of two thousand eight. In that time, she has not witnessed Mr. Greg Smith at his supposed, supposed residence more than five times. He truthfully thought that his daughter lived there and occasionally he stopped by to visit. He drives by there upwards of ten times per day. Uh, that uh, statement is signed, uh, to eighteen twenty one.
Okay, yep. Well, without his law. And that's here. I got an email from Mr. William Tinkham just a little bit ago. States that, I can print it off for everyone, states that, I will, William Tinkham and my fiance, we've been here for almost two years and never physically seen Greg Smith. It said Adams Street, Nelsonville, let alone at two thirty eight Adams Street, Nelsonville, Ohio, where he says he physically lives the whole time I've been here. Uh, I have a letter from Angela Bog that she asked to be read tonight, and I will read it. Um. It says, I ask that this letter be read at Nelsonville City Council meeting tonight, thank you.
Can we have a copy of that to read while you're off?
I have one copy, I don't even know where.
You have a copy?
Go make some copies, go ahead. Yeah.
I just play the evidence, I don't know if they need to, either video to show that uh.
Would you play the video of, of uh?
Tyson.
Of the Tyson.
Got feed on the way to show it over here, it's the base.
Should be popping up, just a second.
Okay, thank you. God.
Need some help?
It's my statement.
I will. Oh. We're holding so that we can, uh, sorry for the, hold up, we're making copies of a, a letter so that everybody can read along with, as I read it, so. Hopefully it won't be much longer.
Anybody else?
I just need one to read. Thank you.
My name is T G Fisk, I live at five thirty seven Adams Street in Nelsonville, Ohio, and this is my personal statement, and I am Andy Hubert. Mr. Corey Taylor, on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty one.
Those are from the two statements that I just read, one was uh, the Tyson and one was Fisk.
Okay, is everyone ready? Alright, to the City Council of Nelsonville and to all the residents of Nelsonville, hello, I, Angela J. A. Miller Bog. Now my name is Angela Jane Ackerson. I served on Nelsonville's City Council recently. I had the privilege of serving on council with Greg Smith, Carla, Dan, Tony, Dottie, and Taylor. I lived in Nelsonville for over thirteen years, before I moved recently. Before moving, I lived at two fifty seven Adams Street. My son still resides at my home there at two fifty seven Adams Street, and I have visited Mr. and Mrs. Smith's home many times. We would all stay up late talking and watching TV. He was at home on the nights when he was not working. I know this because when I needed help before my father passed away, he was always there to help me. I had called him many times to help with my dad. Greg Smith is a resident of the city of Nelsonville and has been since I moved back thirteen years ago to take care of my father. Since moving, I've kept in regular contact with the Smith. I've communicated via phone calls and video calls. Okay, when I came back to visit, I ate dinner with the Smiths and we talked for hours about my move and about how things were going with them. Okay, I asked Mrs. Smith if she and Greg were not separated this past weekend, she told me that they were not, and that she showed me the flowers that she received from Mr. Smith for Valentine's Day. I've seen the flowers she's gotten for years. I have been friends with this miss for a very long time, I've met the person that Greg's helped take care of as, as has his wife on many occasions. He has given his time and energy to help make someone else's life better. It does not deserve the judgment and ridicule that his family is currently enduring because of their personal decisions to help someone else in need. May those without sin cast the first stone, yes, I said that, and thank you for your time, Angela Jane Ackerson Miller Bog. I believe I got it, sure. Okay, um. Is there anything else? Is there someone? We have a witness on the way? Person. Someone coming? I don't know, I heard the door, is that door locked?
Yes. You'll be out there waiting soon.
Yeah. Can we just watch the rest of it? Is there someone? I didn't go on the road. I didn't want to fall in the road. Okay. Or Mr. Taylor, would you just leave it to that person? If it's a witness or two of them, who would it be? Take one. Yeah. It's over. Okay. Okay, bring it forward. Where, where, you have a map? Huh? You have a map? I'm sure you do. Do you sit here? You can sit here. Want to sit here? Want to sit here, that way? About the only available seat for him. What are you trying to say, is that that there? Yeah. That was nice, I guess. Why? Excuse me. Alright. I got, uh, work, sorry, that's alright. Alright, if you would please say your name to the record.
Butler Stanley.
And Mr. Cutler Stanley, why are you here?
Uh, received this with feeling.
Okay. And what is, what is your, uh?
I have it out there.
Okay, and what's your, uh, what, what do you have to bring to this case?
I guess I was going to be asked a couple of questions or something, I don't know.
How do you know, Mr. Greg Smith?
Well, we go way back. I don't even know. I think it was what was George here, uh, two thousand? I don't know. Yeah, I think I left in two thousand five.
Okay.
No leave on council for I don't know, Gary. You know.
Forever, yeah.
I mean, long time ago.
Okay, so, uh, Justin, uh, do you have any knowledge of Mr. Smith's residency or anything that has ever fixed in Nelsonville or elsewhere?
Well, all I can say is, but first of all, I don't, I don't know if I was in this place. You know, I'm a, I'm a Lake County boy now. But uh. I was in, go over here, heard one day, Greg was in there shopping with a lady and like. Maybe it's it. Anyway, they, they just came out and talked to me while I was going, they, I'm stoned, because I was that was one of my accounts, and he just came down the aisle and I started talking to him about the councils and the, how the city going, da, da, da. But you know, I cared about it.
Just after you moved.
Don't know all the way.
But that, this is after you moved down to Nelsonville?
Yeah. I think I, yeah, I was already going. But uh, and he just told me that
Okay, I'm sure.
In there shopping and introduced lady into girlfriend. But yeah. And I I didn't know, so. I mean, I didn't agree, but I didn't have the other.
That he introduced her as girlfriend? Gotcha. That was the Crocker Delphi?
Yes. But like I said, I'm not, I appear to, I wouldn't agree to her if I didn't get a spin, so.
I understand.
I promise that. Like, I don't have a, yeah. And it could be said, you know, I ain't got no business staying here, and I really can't argue that a whole lot of guys, but I'm a resident here, but yeah, I mean, if you get a speed, you gotta go.
Right.
And I didn't see the spin, but.
Okay. Alright, do you guys have anything to ask Mister? Mister Stanley?
Yeah, um, you say this took place in Delphi?
Yeah.
And so, at the time, it was in the Crockers?
Yeah, it's very.
Do you recall what time of year it was?
Um. I don't like it. Short water about my life. More than what I.
Do you recall what year it was?
Uh, no, you know, I've, I've guessed one, one, I would have guessed.
I don't want you to guess. If it's classified from the.
Well, I mean, well, you don't probably.
I'm not the one getting testimony, you are answering my question, please.
You what now?
I said, answer my question.
I did answer your question.
You know what year it was?
No, I didn't, I didn't write it down.
Did uh, Mr. Smith tell you specifically uh, language regarding the girl that he was with?
Yeah, he said girlfriend. And I think that's her kid, I'm assuming that's her kid that was hit there, I don't know. Like I said, I've never met the lady, I don't, I don't even.
Did he say he took care of her?
He, he told me that before. But I don't know, I don't know if he told me that then or not, but he told me that before.
Do you think he might have told you that then?
No.
But he did tell you that that's the girl he takes care of?
Not, not that particular, I know he's took care of, I think, other people. Uh. I'm assuming, I don't know that, but I don't know what he does.
Did you ever met the girl that he takes care of, other than the time that he?
No.
The person he told, you said, he said was his girlfriend, how many times did you met her?
Uh, it was.
And how long have you known her?
What about? I don't, I can't remember if he's on council the first time, but when I got on, I don't, I don't, I don't. I'm thinking of this. Probably something about, about, I don't know, what, about nineties? Nineties, in the nineties.
During that conversation, did he make any references to, uh, having any cohabitation with that person?
He made a part like that, no.
Didn't say anything at all about where she lived or where he lived? Did you ask him why he was there?
Yeah. He was curious, like, what are you doing down here? I mean, you know. I knew that he lived in Nelsonville. Or, I'll say he lived in Nelsonville, so I wasn't like I would run into him like heard in Delphi. Yeah, heard laughing, little bigger story with, uh, about my blood.
And what was his response?
He just said, I'm gonna introduce the lady, the lady here.
According to you, this is my girlfriend.
Yeah.
That's all he said.
Far like my mother.
You know where?
What's your name, Lala?
My name is Daniel H. Close, D A L O S. I'm a attorney in Columbus Hotel, I represent. Has Mr. Smith ever told, told you where he lives?
I know he lived on Adams.
You know if he lived anywhere else? I have some.
I'm just calling up, did you ask Mr. Smith, so, uh, he mentioned that he's girlfriend, you did ask whether he's split up with the wife at that point?
Objection. Beyond scope, if you're.
This is not a.
This is a lot of trial.
You can object if you want, it's fine. Go ahead and answer the question.
Uh, no, I'm, I automatically assumed that he has when he introduced his lady's girlfriend, not me, but that. I didn't know that. I can't remember if I directly asked him that then or not, still.
Alright.
Read it. So it would be fair to say that the time that you encountered Mr. Smith in the Crockers, that the information that's passed between you two provided you no information as to his then current place of residence?
Well, done here.
Would it be fair to say that when you and Mr. Smith talked in Crockers, that during your conversation, he provides you no information, but provided you information?
I'm gonna strip that off our game in here. Uh.
Would you like me to start over?
Yeah.
Would it be fair to say that when you were in Crockers, in the conversation with Mr. Smith, that he provided you no information? That he provided you no information as to his residency?
Well, yeah, I'm, I didn't ask. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I'm not a hundred percent sure where you're going with that, I mean, I didn't, you know, I don't. Is that a question that you would ask him, that?
He's just asking if he told you where he was living. Did he tell you exactly where he was living at that moment?
No, but.
I believe that.
I did.
All right, well, if there's no more questions for Mr. Stanley, we'll, we'll let it go. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you, you want to stick around?
No, I, you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, it's your time. Be careful.
Yes.
All right, um. Do you guys have anything that you want to present, sir?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, approach.
Absolutely.
Would we be referring to Mr. Smith as to his correspondence to this?
Well, I.
We're against reading for.
That's kind of scary, because that's not.
Sorry to interject, I've been getting multiple, uh, notifications, it's hard to guess, if everybody could just speak up a little bit.
Sure.
We're going to, we're going to have extra, this is more of this. Respondence exhibit one.
Okay.
And I would, that's the entire package. As you're looking at. And I would like the affidavit. That has been prepared. And signed by Melanie R. Smith to be read into the record.
Sure thing, would you like me to read it, or do you want to read it?
Uh, the court can read it.
Well, actually, I can read it.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, affidavit, state of Ohio, county of Matt. I, the undersigned Melanie R. Smith duly being sworn hereby disposed, disposes as says, I, Melanie R. Smith. Am over eighteen years old and legally competent to give testimony, I have personal knowledge of the following fact. I have been married to Greg Smith since nineteen seventy-seven, we have a continued relationship during that time and have never separated. We own and maintain our home at two thirty-eight Adam Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. I am aware of Greg's activities. Of caring for a disabled person along with many other pursuits. While these activities prevent Greg from always being home, Greg always and often returns to our home. We engage in many activities as a couple, which includes our church attendance, our grandchildren, car trips, eating out, and Saturday night movie night. One night this fall, Greg, our grandson, stopped at the car wash and talked to Tony Dumpy for about an hour. When he was aware, we were not separated, addition, both Dan Sherman and Tony Dumpy delivered a washing machine to our home this fall. Greg was present for the delivery, Tony returned at a later date to repair the machine, and again Greg was here for the repair. I recently had surgery and Greg was my caretaker. Greg took, took great care of me during my long and slow recovery, which took additional surgery. Greg is in our home often, and after being married to him for forty-three plus years, I am sure that it is his intention to always return to our home. I declare these facts to be true, to the best of my knowledge. Affluent, affluent, further say it not, warrant to and subscribe by Melanie R. Smith. This eighteenth day of February, eighteenth day of February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Signed by Melanie R. Smith. Notarized. By Tori M. Williams. Very good. That is the complete thing. So then we have some, uh, uh, insurance papers. Uh, looks like insurance on the, uh, address two thirty-eight Adam Street. Uh, we have identification cards. For two thousand fifteen Nissan Versa. That's angry. Um. Two thirty-eight Adam Street. Oh, this is off the, let's off the auditor site, shows that. Gregory and Melanie R. Smith. Uh, we have a voter registration. Showing all the way back into two thousand six, two thousand three. Shows for his address of two thirty-eight Adam Street. Uh, let's see here. Got some credit card statements for two thirty-eight Adam Street. And. Got a gas bill to. Two thirty-eight Adam Street. Anyone like to see these? All right, um.
With the exception of the automobile, as far as those items that you've identified for the record as part of. Respondence exhibit one are in the names of Melanie R. Smith and Gregory. I think that's correct.
Okay, well.
The insurance card for the automobile is still correct?
Yeah, there's the high on the CI, plus a certificate, it's right there behind us. Okay, um, in terms of.
There, you have any more witnesses to be told?
No.
It, uh, the affidavit that I submitted. Oh, yeah, Mrs. Smith. Name you as a person. In that affidavit. As you prefer, I call you to the standard, you just give testimony from where you are.
You can give testimony, that's fine.
In that affidavit. This, this is not. In the case that, um. You were present. At, you're from. Over in Washington.
Absolutely.
Was Mr. Greg Smith present?
Yes, he was.
You want to push with the money, please?
Sure. So, can I ask you a question? Well, I'm finishing, and then, yeah. They were kind enough to let everyone else, the total of them.
Much better. Respondence exhibit two. In the record, would you identify what was top of that document?
There's, uh, thirty-five oh three dash zero two residence determination rule. A, and highlighted. Section A, that place shall be considered a residence of a person in which person's habitation is fixed and to which, whenever the person is absent, the person has the intention of returning. Uh, we're skipping down to section D. Where it is highlighted. Um. The place where the family of a married man resides shall be considered to be the person's place of residence, except when the spouses have separated and live apart. I'll just finish reading the rest of it, that's highlighted, that's not highlighted, we only highlight part of it. The place where such a spouse resides, length of time is required to entitle a person to vote and shall be considered to be the spouse's place of residence. I, highlighted section I, if a person does not have a fixed place of habitation? But has a shelter or other location in which the person has been a consistent or regular inhabitant? And to which the person has the intention of returning, that shelter. And I, I'm, I'm out of. Out of information.
What I was going to ask you was with regard to the second underwriting, the second, this client, she said, all of that.
So, I, I understand that, um, well, I had, I had a question regarding, uh, exhibit. A or one.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, does, um. Does a Athens County auditor website that showed, uh, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Smith owning a house together through residency? Sir.
I'm on with you. Okay.
Okay, so, uh, Greg, does that prove residency?
My attorney's talking for me.
Okay. Okay, so I, but he's a, is he not? A question here, so you can't answer.
He's not appearing, but I can, I can tell you as a matter of law. That the ownership of a house is not, is not, it, it, is positive of whether or not a person resides there.
Okay, so, it doesn't prove residency, but it does prove ownership. So.
Yep. So when I.
So when I moved to Nelsonville in two thousand eight, I had a house in Washington County, Ohio, in Lowell, Ohio. That I owned, my name. I moved to Nelsonville, still paid all the bills. Everything, all the water bills, property taxes, electric bills, everything, didn't live there. But I made the choice to change my residency. What's the difference? Did I live in Washington, or did I live in Athens County? Because I have a residency there, and I'm paying the bills.
I too have other residencies that I do pay.
Out of county.
I do have bills for.
The statute, the statute addresses that, how you read the statute.
Okay.
And how that statute would be interpreted. However, in this case, the submission of the evidence is to be looked at in totality of the circumstances. You have an affidavit signed by the wife, Greg Smith, Melanie R. Smith, stating that they reside at a certain place.
Okay.
You then have evidence of their names being on the title of that certain place. Therefore, it is probative with regard to the veracity of the affidavit that's been presented. And that's the rest of the evidence that I have, well. My, my other question goes back to point border. Under eleven oh eight, um. This council shall request prosecutor, or it doesn't need prosecutor, remove proceeding before the council. Is the prosecutor here tonight?
No, no.
If the county prosecutor refuses to accept responsibility, and we'll stop there, did anybody ask the county prosecutor to be here tonight to prosecute this acting? So you don't know whether or not the prosecutor was ever contacted by this council?
He was contacted, but he said he didn't need to be here.
He said he didn't need to be here?
I'll get him on the phone, how about that, would you like that, would that be good for you?
No. Why? Because he's either here or he's not. I don't need to talk to him.
Anyway, okay, we're done. I, so, I have another question.
Go ahead.
So we have. Oh, oh, sorry, I called it. You heard, they, listen.
Counsel, Joe.
You're not running this show, this is, we're done. We're done, this is administrative hearing. I'm sorry, I'm glad you're here, but we're done. Okay?
I moved to strike the entire proceeding.
Well, go right ahead, you can do whatever you want to do.
Would you not interrupt me while I?
No, I, you know what, get used to what your client does, this is what he does to everyone. But guess what?
That doesn't give you the right to do it.
No. You are running, you're not in charge, this is an administrative hearing.
Yes. But all it is, the operative word is hearing, not interruption.
Continue, please.
It says, council shall appoint a special prosecutor. Who shall accept. And proceed with the removal proceeding with the party counsel in any review thereof by the court. If prosecutor indicates to use any fashion? That even though he didn't need to be here, that he would appoint a special prosecutor.
Sir, why don't, why don't you make the point, if your point is that there's proceedings cannot proceed without the prosecutor there, that, that's your point, and if you make it.
I, I, I ask you whether or not.
I believe it's being a little, little by the chair. So, your point has been made at this point, you don't need to read the section two.
Sir, to push this section, I want to see if both of them were followed. I've asked my questions, I've had my response, thank you.
Okay. Motion to go in executive session, I have another question. Sure, so we have a, um, a statement from your wife, I'm sorry, what is her name?
Melanie.
Melanie, okay. So we have a statement from her, it is notarized, and we have, uh, a video that she made the statement, it's going to statements?
Oh, that's a theory a little harder to read.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure.
An administrative hearing per se is acceptable. The issue goes to credibility, not of responsibility.
Okay. Um, I actually have another question that's got, um. Lost it in that train of thought there. Oh, I have a question, um, Mr. Hunter, from my understanding, it wouldn't go to what he's referring to in that last, uh. Uh, point he was trying to make, it wouldn't go to that prosecutor, and so we made a vote, so.
No, the way I look at the statute, you can pass the prosecutor, the county prosecutor. The prosecutor.
Thank, thank you.
I, I would like to suggest that that is correct, that. His response was, you can't have. The statute where a charter says the prosecutor, council shall require. That's me. It's not permissible, it's permissible.
Upon our vote after the hearing, or something?
No. Prosecutor removal proceeding. These are proceeding.
I believe that the hearing is that. Your point is moving.
Okay. All right. Motion to go in executive?
Okay.
We're going to.
Inviting in, inviting in Mr. Hunter. Um. Let me bring up. All council members, except for Greg.
Excuse me.
There's no way I'm leaving unless you cut my ring off.
If you're, if you're going, if you're going. Uh, moving back to.
Yeah, discuss.
And that's to consider the evidence, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I need to make another motion straight. And it's not relevant, material, and potentially. That meaning and embarrassing information in those affidavits that went directly with the issue of residence. Those affidavits, the individuals. Are giving you, that have information that are not related, I would like strictly to direct.
Okay, overruled. No, you don't. Yes, I do, I'm sorry, the third is, that person.
So it's your, your.
My, it's my ruling that that is.
Okay, very good, really.
I'm gonna end the video.
Yep.
Elizabeth, don't hang up.
Motion.
Yes, okay. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
John? Yes, yes.
To lobby.
To lobby. All right, I'm gonna. Bye. All right. Motion to come out of executive session, no move.
Second.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
And Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Ms. Grant.
Yes, Mr. Booth.
Yes.
And.
Let's go on.
Motion to carry this on till Monday night, our next council meeting for decision, written decision will be made.
And voted on.
And vote.
Second.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. And for the record, Elizabeth texted and thought it, yes.
You voted in executive session?
She just texted. Motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Mr. Hunter, Dumpy?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
All right. Guys, be safe driving home. See you on Monday.